The public hearing date at the last council meeting. And so, the first hearing has to be at least ten days from the publication. So, there is a need to change it from the eleventh to the seventeenth, so we can meet this requirement. But just for first hearing.
What does that put us back off in the other time plan?
Does change anything else. Just the first hearing date. The second hearing date will stay at twenty. But we do need ten days, and if we had the wrong publication date for the newspaper.
What's the publication date?
It's on a Wednesday. We thought it was the Friday before. But we changed, the city changed newspapers.
Because of the news. We have to discuss the newspapers. When the newspapers are publishing tax rate now.
Right, yes, yes.
The document that we have in front of us that has tomorrow's date. This is the proposed agenda that will be published on the seventeenth, is that correct? And because it's a public hearing, we, why would we need, why would we have to take action on versus this public hearing? I guess it's a good for some.
Well, the biggest reason it has to be posted in case a quorum of city council meetings members show up, that's the biggest thing. It won't be necessarily any action, but the posting is just as a precaution, otherwise it.
Mayor, it's really not a precaution, it's required by law. The public hearing process is not for you necessarily to receive, but also the benefit of citizens to have a quorum of their elected officials here.
So you see one?
Yes, I have not, but I'm.
We have to look at it. The question isn't about whether it should be posted, it's about the wording of.
Okay, which word are you concerned about, Mr. Johnson?
Number one.
Because it's just a public hearing.
It's just a public hearing, but that says where to discuss and take action, not who votes on the budget. And I just want to be, make sure we're standing on the end of it. Is that a penalty? We're talking about a public hearing, and that's talking about actually.
Who did them put this together?
The city attorney, that's just a typo with the discuss and take action.
Well, I mean, we're not talking about the budget, we're talking about the tax hearings, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so it just, it does, you're right. It needs to reflect what they're doing, and that it's a tax rate hearing, and put the proposed tax rate in there. I mean, that's an easy fix. No, it's a good catch, it's, that's an easy fix.
Thank you. Do we need to make sure Ms. Dickey gets that, because we don't want to post it? She's not.
If she comes back, I'll tell her.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, thank you. And like you said, the main reason was that people used to have clothes, and they were just used to that posting date, and it's all that changed completely. Councilman Randall?
Yeah.
You want to ask? Say, it's against the comparison. You can change the date.
Yeah, yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Randall?
I move that we approve moving the public tax hearing set for September eleventh at six p.m. at City Hall, September seventeenth, six p.m. at City Hall, with the corrections to the.
Okay, as the public members and citizens, I don't know, uh, discuss, consider, take action on moving the public tax hearing set for September eleventh at six p.m. at City Hall, September seventeenth, six p.m. at City Hall, be approved. You heard the motion, ready for a question?
Mr. Johnson?
My question would be, I'd like to make it to the meeting on the seventeenth, rather than eleven.
It's a hearing, so you don't have to.
We don't have to.
Any other readiness? All those in favor say aye. And you shared that.
I did, and she'll make the correction. She doesn't, she'll change her.
Next, Department of Reports, Administration, Ms. Dickey?
I don't know what was discussed on attorneys, I was planning on going through that, but I wasn't here, so I don't know what was discussed.
That's okay, we'll have it in the record. Uh, any, any update on minutes?
Uh, my computer is now frozen, completely locked, so I can't even get.
Okay, well, we'll carry them over, not a problem. It won't be the first time. Uh, any other thing on admin that you want to report, Ms. Dickey?
Um, no, just that we had the five attorneys' proposals that we got back, and the RFP. They'll also see an RFP for city engineer that I gave them, unless they didn't get those. Those up there?
It was up here, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And so, working on that, and then I guess we're gonna invite attorneys to come to the next meeting?
They came up with an altered schedule.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It'll be, it'll be on the record.
Okay.
I have a question. Councilor Ove. In the process, as far as, you've got, uh, we had a question, I guess this is what this was, the last meeting, is this for the grant for three hundred fifty thousand, is this the wording that you would say you're gonna get to us?
No, sir, that's actually a new grant for the seven hundred thousand dollar.
Seven twenty-three, seven.
Right, for the Hartley.
Yeah, okay, I just thought, because you're supposed to be giving us some information, I thought this would be.
No, this is just going forward, so that you guys are aware, and from now on, I'm gonna be posting that on the board out front, so any citizen that wants to see what we're applying for can see it.
As far as administrative, uh, do we have any questions? So like, under administrative, we had, we had something on a rule, extended state complaint, I don't know if that was you or the mayor?
That was the mayor.
And we've, as far as administrative, we've been getting complaints from citizens in reference to Panther Hill, is someone, is anyone documenting those things, or is that a city, is that an issue that we, that we have a plan for, Mr. Mayor?
Well, it's actually quite different, because the construction repair things that even our inspectors have pointed out to us are being corrected or have been corrected as they were being brought to them. What we have in extended, royal extended living suites is a substandard slumlord, unhealthy sewage backup type system, so I wouldn't compare.
So, again, I'm, I don't, I'm not, I'm talking about process, right? So, if the city of Prairie is gonna get more engaged in local apartment complexes or livings, my question is, what is our, do we have a complaint process, or how are you, how are you handling, we were on ABC thirteen last week, how are we, what is our plan for, how are we handling that administratively in reference to resolving some of those things for the city, for the city of Prairie, not for?
No. Well, I've been directly involved as city building officer in all of it, as parents or students have shared things with me, I've shared them with the owners, and those things have been, have been or are being addressed. I've dealt with inspectors. When the gentleman came in from the royal living suites, and pictures were taken as to the totally substandard TCQ violations, that's a totally different issue. But the process is the same. If Mr. Randall shared a complaint about where he was living or renting, and it was something the city could or should get involved in, some things we're not to get involved in. But if it's health and safety, because if those folks with that sewage backup go and shake somebody else's hands, and we have a virus spreading around the city, that's a life safety issue. I'm working on that with Bureau Veritas, just like I work on the situations over Panther Hill with Bureau Veritas.
But with health and safety, we're talking about health and safety, and citizens who live in Panther Hill said that they don't have any fire extinguishers in their apartment, or if they have safety issues, there was a fire there before, so there are people complaining about that. How are we deciding to choose and focus on pant, extended state versus Panther Hill, when I just wanna know the process on if a citizen come in and has an issue, do you have a form on why you would wanna TCQ? There's been fire for TCQ from Panther Hill. And so, when we talk about TCQ and public health and safety, we haven't seen the documentation, but what I'm asking is, what is our process so we can rectify these issues? And so, any citizen who has an issue, they can feel like they're being treated fairly throughout the city, and not just focused on one versus the other.
Have you seen a TCQ file anywhere in the city? I'd like to see.
Have I seen it?
Have you seen it? You said there was a TCQ file, I'm assuming you know what you're talking about.
TCQ gave, issued, issued a citation to Panther Hill, did they not? I don't know, but you, but again, I'm not talking about, listen to me, Mr. Mayor, I'm not, I don't wanna get into.
You make the allegations.
I'm asking about process, so I don't wanna get into the politics of it, I'm asking, if you're talking about substandard or health and public safety of citizens in the community, do you have a form, or what is the process you're using to pick one over the other? So I don't wanna get into the politics of it, I'm just asking you, what's your process? What's leading this, and not just you telling us, so are you gonna have a document that you're gonna provide to us, or that the citizen's gonna have, get to, get to look at? That's all I'm asking, so I don't wanna get into it with you.
I'm, I'm not providing your document in answer to your question, but as people come to me, whether they're students over there, on Clark Street, on Dooley Street, or on University Drive, or parents, I have been addressing them. That's the process. Now, if you want something else, put it together and we'll follow it. But that's what I've been doing, and I've been following up with every single phone call, email, or text. So, that's, that's been the process. But, yes, Councilman Randall?
Uh, I don't think, I don't think the question is whether you're handling it, I think Councilor Ove just wants to know, really, like, if you're keeping records of those things, because if, if you say this extended state has this major TCQ violation, shouldn't you have some kind of documentation, so if it happens again, you can say, well, this is your third, whatever?
Yes.
May I?
Please.
Because we can talk, this is a blow in the face right now, it's really technically not even on the agenda, it's just an administrative staff update. I think your issue is noted, the way I would handle it is the same way you can handle the request for proposals process, if you wanna establish a written process, let's put it on that next meeting, and come up, give you some time to chew on it, and come up with something that makes sense. Then if a majority of council wants to do it that way, and you want the mayor to present a written, you know, complaint form, and document every single complaint, how it's responded to, then you all dictate policy. Okay? Is that fair?
Finance, Mr. Johnson?
Okay, good evening again. Uh, you should have a financial report through the month of July, which is the tenth month, has the green cover on it. Okay, through the month of July, which is the tenth month in our fiscal period, we currently are showing three million two hundred fifty-three thousand dollars worth of revenue versus a budget of two million eight, favorable variance of four hundred and twenty-three Expenditures to date is two million six versus a budget of two million six, so it's just about equaling towards the budget, so it gives us an overall favorable variance at this time of five hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. If you go to page two, page two will show that as far as the total of cash accounts that we have with our different checking accounts, we currently have available two million six forty-one, three ninety-four. Again, the major amount is still in the general obligation bond fund, and what we have in the tax department fund. Those are the, basically, our current position, I really don't have any other areas of concern at this time, if you all have any other questions for me.
JJ, you're off today, we had several complaints about lighting upon like the past two weeks at the city. If we were to come up with basically a process, and would we like to add more lights, where would that money come from?
Uh, what, what you need to do is, do a study, I mean, do an evaluation of what it would cost, and then we'll talk about it at that time.
Well, I said, where would that money come from?
Well, I'd look at, I'd look at the budget and see, right now, I can't, we can't just say exactly where it would come from, if it comes from, uh, we do have a favorable position, so therefore, we do have some possibilities that we can find a line item to pull it from. But you need to just go ahead on and go through a process of coming up with an evaluation of the lighting situation, see how much money we're gonna need for it, and we'll look at it at that time. Yes, sir?
That would, that would be something, with, with your budget process, that would be something that we should be looking at before they come in budget, right?
No, we have a current, a favorable position to current budget, so you do have some opportunity in this current fiscal period.
But we have to make, we have to make a budget amendment in order to.
Uh, we'd make, the amendment would only be moving from one line item to another line item. So you can, you can do it at the next budget meeting, if you can come up with your analysis prior to the budget meeting, and we can do it at that time, or you should have a special meeting, that's your answer.
Yeah, so, you know how good a budget process is, you can share a different line item, and some, some line items can be looked at, can be taken, if you know a description of what's taken. Uh, if we wanted to get like specifics of what was taken out once we get to the line item, oh, would you be able to provide that?
Yes.
Okay, so I just have to ask you?
Yes, right.
What, what?
No problem at all?
That's Councilor Ove.
Yes, sir.
In the report, we're, we show, we have a favorable, favorable provision. Are there any projects that we need to be mindful of trying to get done within the next thirty days before, before this budget cycle closes? Councilman Jones just asked about street lighting, and streetlights, and it probably come out of, it could come out of any one of our funds, but don't we have a thirty, we have less than thirty days left before to spend money, and so, can you talk, can you communicate to all of us what that is, so we don't get here after the twenty-fourth, and we only have like a week? And so, could you tell us, you know, walk us through that process, because the budget closes September thirty-one?
Well, the fiscal period will close September thirty-first, you're right.
So, so that means everything we're looking on here goes away, and we start over with the rate that we're trying to set, and so, for all of council to, can you briefly communicate so everyone could understand that process?
Uh, as far as expenditures incurred in this current fiscal period, we have until September the thirtieth to incur any expenditures that will be recorded in this current fiscal period. Uh, go ahead.
So, so, for example, Mr., I think it was on the agenda, and we, we've sat in here, I think, are, Mr. Mayor, are we doing the roof, are we gonna get the roof fixed in this budget period, are we doing the?
That's a, oh, there's a question, no.
There, there's several things we voted on to happen in this fiscal period. We don't know where we're at with those things, and this is our less than thirty day window to find out where we at, to be able to match what we said we were gonna do with the money we have left to be able to spend it. And so, I'm just simply asking, are we on track with what we said we're gonna do? Are there any last minute things that we need to get in within the last thirty days that we need to move the line items, right? Because we know that if we budgeted, when we approve our budget, we can't just haphazardly spend money from one line, from one line item to the other, and so, there may be some adjustments that need to be made on a twenty-fourth meeting, and so I'm asking you, where are we at with that?
Mr. Johnson, what line item would streetlights come out of, and how much is in that?
Okay, let's look at. Go to page seven. Okay, on page, no, excuse me, page seven, yeah, page seven. Look at repairs, streets and bridges toward the bottom of the page. We currently have spent fifty-seven thousand, you got seventy thousand budgeted, so through the month of July, you have favorable variance of thirteen thousand dollars. And, pardon? Yes, right, thirteen, well, that's thirteen thousand at the end of July, you have two more months to, as far as cost goes, and if you look at, let me look over here now, all right, it's seven thousand a month, so you got another fourteen, fourteen thousand dollars, plus you got twenty-seven thousand dollars there, that you could.
You said seven a month, that's, you're talking like you could tell you.
Currently, you have a favorable variance through July of fourteen thousand dollars.
Right.
Now, you have two more months in the budget period, this is July's budget, uh, the budget is seven thousand a month, so you have seven thousand both in August of seven and September.
For repairs.
Right, right, exactly, so you add the two together.
Okay.
So that's why I'm saying you got about twenty-seven thousand, you guys already in the line item, that you can use for.
So, let me, let me finish answering the question. As I reported to council quite a few months ago, and we've been working with the James Muse corridor from Business Two Ninety all the way to Owen Road, and over toward H.G. Jones Elementary School, I shared with council in meeting with CenterPoint, what was going on with adding lights literally just east of City Hall, and down James Muse, including right at the intersection that was pointed out to us earlier, Two Ninety. What CenterPoint made me aware of maybe six weeks ago, was that they don't do as San Bernard does. San Bernard, you tell them you need a street light over there, and they handle it. Well, at least on this corridor, which is our border between San Bernard and CenterPoint Energy, CenterPoint doesn't do that, but they sent me a list of third party vendors, so I've been in touch with two of those veterans, something, and another, both of them have five star ratings. So, the lights and the process in lighting up that area has been reported to council, and that's the status of it. So, we're just finalizing a third party vendor, and then we'll be able to come back to council as to how much that is, but the process is started to answer council's questions. Councilman Jones, I think you're next.
So, as I can see, a lot of citizens are kinda like, eyes perked up, and we said that we spent four fifty-seven thousand dollars in street, in bridge repairs, um, so like, I think this is what, like, council has been talking about. One, I don't remember if it's been brought up, the city council, moving forward with lighting, I mean, because if that was the case for the past three meetings, a citizen has made a comment about our lighting, and about our streets, and not one time throughout, either your report, or any of our reports, that we ever came out and said that we was addressing the issue, and that's why it keeps being brought up at every city council meeting. So, I mean, our communication going on, has to get better, and we have to do something about it, because I'm pretty sure we don't have all the money to repair all the lights, so that means that we need to put a process going forward upon how we would take care of each area in the next two years, to try to like light up the areas in which have been heavily complained about, such as just as streets. We won't be able to fix all the streets, but we have to put a process in place going forward to say, okay, this year we're planning on fixing these three or four streets, following it, which many, I'd say, I've been in contact with JJ about. So I, I don't quite understand, I just wanna throw that out there, because as was, you guys, we spent fifty-seven thousand dollars, I don't think either one of the council members have seen where, or voted upon where any of that money has gone, and I don't think you guys in the city have seen any street updated, or anything done of that such, so I kinda feel like it's, it's not fair that the budget do that policy.
Okay, Councilor Ove? Well, JJ, um, two months ago, I asked for a report, breakdown of street maintenance and repair of this line item specifically, because we found out that this line item was being used for tree trimming.
Right.
And so, that was not, so, so, do you, one, you, do you have that, we asked for that a month ago? Two, I, again, all we're asking, Mr. Mayor, is that we have a plan that we can inform citizens of, if, if you have a plan to put up ten lights, or five lights, or three lights, we would like to know, so we can communicate that to the citizens, and we can let them know, and your neighborhood will be up in eight months. We've, we've asked for this for the last five to six months, when this came up before. Money is being spent, and we just wanna make sure it's evenly distributed throughout, throughout the neighborhoods and the community, but we also, the, the reason why we're talking about this is that we're saying in the budget, we have twenty-seven thousand dollars left in this line item. Do you have, can you put together a plan for us to be able to have something for our September twenty-fourth meeting, to be able to use this twenty-seven thousand dollars throughout the city, bringing lights to some neighborhoods, and updating some streets, so this money does, so, so we can get what we need to get done?
To answer your question, yes, but the other portion is, and I don't know, this might have been just before you got back on council, Councilor Ove, the, the city, when I came in two years ago, the plan that was in place, if you were six or seven years on the council, we didn't have one. So, if we don't have one now, it's nothing new. What we have done, and I have passed that out to those who were on council, was there was a list of lightings that San Bernard did, and that report came to council, I'd be glad to bring it back, because it was everywhere from Rosewood to Pine, through Alta Vista, through just about most of the neighborhoods. CenterPoint had taken care of Ruby and Emerald Street, so we didn't have to worry about that. But, keep in mind that whatever lighting we don't have, has not been here for the last fifty years since the city incorporated, so I just wanna make sure residents and you understand what we're working with. So, lights have been added, and they're continuing to be added. I just gave you an update on CenterPoint's position, I'd be glad to bring that to you. But, from a, a budget standpoint, council approves a budget, and whatever's in that budget, and to be spent throughout the year, you approved it, and streets, lights, tree cutting, whatever's in that item, is approved by council. Now, if council wants to change that, then that's what I'll work with, but in working and operating the city, I'm working with the budget that council approved. So, yes, Councilwoman Williams?
Also, I know there are different areas that need streetlights, but we also have to be mindful too, when you put up a streetlight pole, the next question they ask is who's paying that bill? So, streetlights are not free, so depending on where you are in the area of Prairie, in order for them to put up a light pole, they need to charge that to somebody.
You have to charge.
So, yes, 'cause where we are on Orange Road, we have lights, but they're charged to us. So, we need to be careful about where we want the lighting, and what is it gonna cost the person that lives across the street, or where.
I'm gonna be the bad guy again, I mean, we're starting to kinda bleed into the conversation about lighting, it really hasn't been posted properly. There may be other people in the community that wanna.
Any, any other questions for Mr. Johnson? Mr. Johnson? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I know for the other projects that are coming up, there is a line item for the city treasurer, is there a line item for city treasurer for this year?
It's, it was in this year's budget.
For the city treasurer?
So it gets in, it's also in next year's budget.
Okay, we just, we don't know how the city treasurer.
So, the, the funds that we did use on the city treasurer, I bet that's.
It, it stays in the general fund.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, you're great.
Thank you. Uh, municipal court, judge had recent surgery and had a problem today, so, so she had to go back to the doctor, and this, we didn't take care of that, so let's give that to you. Chief Solomon?
Oh, I'm all right.
Can you share with the public? Chief, I think in light of, and we didn't get to squeeze that in, but maybe for the public, the statement that you had made, or, would you, I'd hate for us to sit.
We'd rather still wait for those, right now.
Okay. I just wanna make sure the public knows we're not doing anything else, so. Any questions for the chief? Or this violation's reported? Officer White, can you share with that?
Welcome, council, mayor, citizen of Prairie. Mayor, I emailed you my report, do you have any questions?
Uh, I, I think for the benefit of. Uh, I, I think for the benefit of council, you said there have been approximately seven, seven, seventy-seven ten day notices sent out?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, around thirty-three, thirty-five?
That I verified, yes, sir.
Uh, we don't, council doesn't have that report.
Okay, well, I'll get you, make sure I get your comment. But yes, thirty-three of, of, of the date have changed, and I haven't still been able to verify all of the, of the seventy-seven, I'm just supposed to. And with the time allowed it, that's what I'm able, what I'm able to do so far. Yes, sir.
Uh, do you know how, how much, uh, money we have received from the fund?
No, sir. No, sir, I don't.
Uh, could we possibly have that at the one in the morning?
Next time.
Well, yeah, that'll go through Judge Alexander, and we're looking to separate that, that came out at the last meeting.
Yes.
Uh, they have said, I think, the first week of October, for that first sweep to go through.
Yes, sir.
But, uh, as Officer White said, a lot of the, uh, not quite half, but very close to it, have come into compliance as a result of the process, which is what we really want.
Correct.
Everybody.
Everybody's kind of compliant, yes, sir.
And, uh, I do, Ms. Dickey? Would you do me a favor, uh, this is what Officer White sent me for the benefit of council while we're here, would you do a, a double sided list for council for me? Uh, was it oversight on my part? Any, any other questions for Officer White, and again, we wanna, uh, thank you, and, uh, Ms. Herndon, Councilwoman Williams, for that process, because now we're finally getting it, uh, where we want it, it's, it's running like a machine and getting some things done, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Public Works, Mr. Aguilar. Uh, for the benefit of the audience and the councilmen, I know you'll be sharing with.
My name is David Aguilar, I work for Public Services, we are your traction provider here for the city of Prairie View. There's council mayor, thank you for having me, there's two things that we're working on right now, one is the Brookside Metal Department, they have a hundred and forty-two poly cards out there.
Trash cans.
Yeah, the nicest down cans you all have at your house, and there's a hundred and forty-two of them out there, so I've been working with the mayor, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna put some of the commercial dumpsters out there, so currently, we'll put ten eight yard dump dumpsters out there, dump them twice a week, and it'll equal up to about the same amount of service they currently have. Um, they have sixty-two yards with, a week on, with a hundred and forty-two carts, they'll have sixty-four yards with the, with the front and commercial, uh, uh, containers. Uh, the, the price difference is like thirty-eight dollars, uh, and that, that's thirty-eight dollars more, but we're just gonna put it back towards even to where how y'all, 'cause I think y'all fill the citizens, I mean, the residents, each one of them, so this way, we're just gonna fill the city the same way, and keep it the same.
What are we gonna do, you have a plan? So, in the poly cards, uh, you may be less trash, when you go to the dumpsters, you may have more trash, what is, what are we gonna do if those start to?
Well, right, well, right, well, if they start to overflow, then we'll, we'll sit down and talk to the, to the management teams of Brookside Metals out there, and say, hey, look, you have, each poly cart is about half a yard, so you have a hundred and forty-two of them out there, this equals, uh, sixty, uh, sixty-four yards, and then we'll have sixty-eight yards of, of front load containers out there.